Okay, folks, I'd like to welcome you to the St. Charles County Council Meeting of September 25th. We will begin our meeting with an invocation from Pastor Scott Mays of Calvary Temple, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Joe Brassel. Please stand.
Our precious Heavenly Father, today we come to you with gratitude. We thank you for the ability we have to live in such an incredible place, and you blessed us so very much. We thank you for making each person in this room individual and unique, made in your image. And Lord, help us to treat one another with dignity and honor. We thank you for those servants today who are serving faithfully here on this council. We pray, Lord, that you would glorify yourself tonight through the decisions of this county council. We pray that you would just continue to bless this county and continue to guide and direct it with wisdom and knowledge, that, Lord, you would help us to focus on you and let your blessings continue to be poured out. We pray for your wisdom, your strength, and your courage, that we can do what is right and we can do what is good for all the citizens. Lord, we thank you again for this council. We thank you for county staff. We thank you for the first responders, the hospital staff, and all the medical personnel who worked so diligently to make this place that we call home such a wonderful place. And Lord, we thank you for it, and we give you the praise in the name of your Son Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Matt Swanson.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brassel.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Elam.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Schneider.
Here.
Councilmember Tim Baker.
Here.
Okay, first on the agenda tonight is the conditional use permits final passage, and we'll start with Bill Number 5222.
Bill Number 5222, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 23-14, for an 88-foot telecommunications tower to Houston Holdings LLC, property owners, and Network Real Estate LLC applicant.
Comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 23-14, for an 88-foot telecommunications tower to Houston Holdings LLC, property owners, and Network Real Estate LLC applicant. Councilmember Swanson?
No.
Councilmember Brassel?
No.
Councilmember Elam?
No.
Councilmember Hollander?
No.
Councilmember Hammond?
No.
Councilmember Schneider?
No.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Okay, Bill Number 5222 fails. We now move on to Bill Number 5223 for final passage.
Bill Number 5223, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 23-17, for a storage yard for recreational vehicles, boats, trailers, and trucks, to Arthur Wildchutes, Doris Wildchutes, and Omar Wildchutes, property owners, and TND Outside Storage LLC applicant.
Questions or comments?
I just got a comment on this particular, this is my district, and I did not get one complaint or concern on this particular issue. I normally don't favor these type of zoning requests. However, some of the other ones that we passed are in much unfavorable places than this one is. This one's in a pretty rural part of the county, so I'm going to support it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Please call the roll.
An ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 23-17, for a storage yard for recreational vehicles, boats, trailers, and trucks, to Arthur Wildchutes, Doris Wildchutes, and Omar Wildchutes, property owners, and TND Outside Storage LLC applicant. Councilmember Brassel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson?
No.
Okay, Bill Number 5223 passes. I don't believe there's any, there's one conditional use permit that's tabled. I don't think there's any movement on that. So we'll open up a public hearing on the setting of the 2023 tax rates. Okay, is there anyone here that...
Arnie Dinoff.
Okay, Mr. Dinoff.
Good evening, members of council. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Dinoff, county public advocate. And to all the county council members in the administration, the economy here in St. Charles County is very strong despite inflation. Last year was 7.2%. In the past two years, which has seen an increase in inflation rates, home values throughout St. Charles County have leaped up dramatically from two years ago during the assessment period done by the county assessor. It's setting all-time values in real estate sales, land sales countywide, personal property owned by St. Charles County residents, and it went from the tune of 24% all the way up to over 30%, depending on what part of the county you were and how hot the sales were within your subdivision or your neighborhood. So that means a lot more taxes to the various jurisdictions among St. Charles County. But we do have the Hancock Amendment, which is part of our Missouri State Constitution, which limits and has rollbacks when we have such a huge increase in tax values and tax increase, or assessment values. Now, when it comes to sales taxes, we have been off the charts before COVID, during COVID, and well past COVID, including this year. Even to my right, even the former Director of County Finance and Budget Management, now the County Assistant Director of Administration, has made verbal testimony and PowerPoint presentations before the council that he was shocked at the high percentage of sales tax income, breaking records each and every year since 2018. It's been breaking the bar set and the record from previous years. Sales of goods and sales keep on growing in our county because of the vibrant, vibrant economy and the monthly population changes of new residents calling St. Charles County home sweet home. Now, the County Director of Administration, I sent an email to him this afternoon, and he didn't provide me with the actual percentage calculations, but I think we can all agree that there was at least one year in the last five years that toppled 7% sales tax increase from the previous year. The next year was 6%, if I recall correctly, and Mr. Schnarr knows those figures from the top of his head, but yet he wanted me to calculate it before the meeting. But we can all agree that all the other years before COVID and after COVID, the sales tax increase was 5% or more of an increase from the previous year. So that means a lot more money to the coffers of St. Charles County. Now, for the County General Fund, I would recommend that it be set at zero rate. The county staff, including the Director of Finance, who is the acting director, I'm not sure why she's put in the time and the effort, I'm not sure why somebody here hasn't made her the permanent Director of Finance, but that's ongoing saga with that position, but her recommendation was also zero. The County Road and Bridge Fund, I ask that you set that at zero rate because of the huge increase in onslaught of sales tax revenues for the last five years. The recommended rate by the Acting Director of Finance is 17.43 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. The County Dispatch and Alarm Fund, I ask that this county council set it at zero rate this year. The recommendation rate of the Acting Finance Director is .335 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. So that's over 20 cents, but yet you've yielded tens of millions of dollars in new sales tax income each and every year from St. Charles County residents and visitors to St. Charles County. I have to laugh at the county statement of the voluntary rollback of 2022 tax rates. It's not voluntarily. It's mandated by the state auditor who takes the marching orders from the state constitution, which allows to check and balances when there's a huge assessment every two years. The county is like every other greedy and money-grabbing political subdivision of the state, trying to take as much money from St. Charles Countyans that you possibly can. Right now, every household pays 54% of some form of a fee of a tax at the federal, state, county, and local level, including school districts, community college, fire districts, ambulance, and library districts. So you try to get all the money that you possibly can. It's now time to give us a tax break. The reason is the county-appointed and elected officials do not know how to be conservative and restrained by spending money in a budget like every other St. Charles County family does on a weekly, monthly, and yearly basis. Just like on this evening's county council agenda, borrowing $25 million to $30 million at an interest rate of 7%? Insane to invest in an outdated county corrections facility. The total project will be $60 million to $157 million. $25 million in ARPA funds, $27 million of other bonding capacity from 1986, $8 million in lawsuit settlement, and a highly subsidized family arena complex of which you purport to spend over $15 million in renovations, which is a losing venue, and we have to highly subsidize that each and every year from the County General Fund. When will the asking and begging for money on the shoulders cease and stop of us as St. Charles County residents? I ask that you set all three tax levies at zero and that you give us a tax break because you have yielded and enjoyed tens of millions of dollars in new sales tax each and every year since 19, I'm sorry, since 2018. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Claire, is there any other one, any other speakers?
I have no more cards.
No one that has cards. Okay, any other speakers on the public hearing on the tax rate? Okay, seeing none, we now move on to public comments. And public comments, we are, just a reminder, you need to fill out a card. We allow three minutes for each speaker, and we will allow three speakers for, three speakers against, if we have that many, on one particular topic. Claire?
Mary Alice Wright. Chairman and members of the council, thank you for voting the way you did earlier, just a few moments ago, regards to the cup. I'm here to talk about Bill Number 5224. It's a request for rezoning that will directly affect 171 homeowners, and more than half of the homeowners in this area are opposed to the rezoning. We have already received a unanimous votes to deny the rezoning by you and your own staff for two years now. The resident on this parcel wants to rezone for personal gain. This is one single landowner out of 171 homeowners. The majority of us do not want to have commercial land zoned in our neighborhoods. For AT&amp;T, this is actually the most cost-effective and easiest way for them to do what they want to do on this land, regardless of us. If you rezone this property, allowing for one private party to benefit, it will lower our home values, and there was substantial material that we submitted via email to the Planning and Zoning. And if allowed to rezone, many other businesses can actually be built in this small space. Your staff stated that rezoning on such a small area raises concerns about creating a precedent, which invites land use conflicts. To quote, "The fact that the rezoning area by design could realistically be used for just one cell tower raises concerns about county approval of spot zoning." The Missouri courts have defined spot zoning as a rezoning of a single parcel or small land area that benefits a private party to the detriment of the public interest. Please keep in mind that we have a working cell tower already in existence on the American Water Tower. We really don't need to change the location. It works great where it is and where it resides. The real reason we feel that AT&amp;T wants to move to a new location is for their own opportunity to make more money. They are requesting to rezone to commercial so they can expand their services, to add more business for themselves, under the guise of enhancing our own service, which none of us have complaints about. The rezoning is driven by corporate greed and a single landowner. They want to add a proprietary network, which is what they own. It's called FirstNet, and they will make money off of this deal. They want other cell networks to lease spots on their very own tower, and they will make even more money because of that. They threaten us, and we've heard them threaten us, to say that they will take us to Circuit Court. But why? There's already great service. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Emma Ernst.
Appreciate it. Claire?
Good evening. By now, you have all heard from us, myself and my neighbors, about why we're opposed to Bill 5224, which would allow commercial zoning in our neighborhood. Some of you have even heard from us two or three times, so we'll be brief about it tonight. This application threatens the aesthetic value of our homes, and it would diminish our property values. It opens the door for future commercial expansion in our highly residential neighborhood. The house that sits on that property now is unlikely to be used residentially again after a portion of that land is commercialized and a cell tower is constructed in the front yard. This application also does not align with the 2030 Future Land Use Plan, which calls for this area to be used for low-density residential properties like it is now. In addition, county staff reported that the property doesn't have the appropriate frontage to an arterial road, so it doesn't qualify as a neighborhood business center, and it doesn't meet the requirements for neighborhood commercial zoning. County staff also reported that approval of this application raises concerns about spot zoning. Decreasing our home value and injuring the aesthetic values of our neighborhood for the financial gain of a single property owner and a huge corporation like AT&amp;T is not acceptable. This isn't about cell coverage, having access to the latest 5G technology, and it's not about benefiting the people who actually live in the area. This is a cheap fix for AT&amp;T so they can save money by leasing land that is more affordable than their current place on the Water Tower. This cost-effective move for the company comes at the expense of the residents who actually live in our neighborhood. County staff has recommended that you deny this application, and the Planning and Zoning Committee has unanimously voted no, not once, but twice, two years in a row. We've submitted 68 written protest letters in opposition to this rezoning. That's 120 homeowners who live, work, and raise their kids within 1,000 feet of that property. Please vote to deny this application and help protect the people and the families of St. Charles County that you represent. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Matt Voss.
Hi, I just wanted to say I'm wanting to enlarge the lawn care facility out on Josephville Road, and I don't know what I really signed up for. I say I'm asking for you to allow me to, so, thank you.
Thank you. Claire?
Ovi Kavos.
He's coming.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name's Ovi Kavos. I represent Car Fan LLC. We're a used car dealership in Washington, Missouri, and we want to relocate to the Lake St. Louis community. And I'm here to present to you the rezoning application for 8073 Hawk Ridge Trail.
What's it now?
I'm sorry, you wanted to present?
I filled out for the rezoning. I put it in the notes. I'm not sure why I got called up at this time.
Well, you can, you can, you can spend your three minutes talking about the rezoning. And if we had, if we have questions for you when we get to that, we can then call you.
I fully know how the process works.
You're welcome to take your three minutes right now and give us, give us an idea.
So this is just the concept plan at this property. We're going to add some buffer in the back and the rear. I think that's the north for the residential neighbor there. And we will have two, two entries, one, I guess this pointer doesn't really work very good, but there will be an entry at Hawk Ridge Trail, and then one on Mean, that side street there, Mean Go Lane. And we will be in operating business of about 15, 15 cars or so at a current time. And yeah, if there are any additional questions, I'm here to answer.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Emily Schwartz Post.
Hi, everyone. I'm Emily Schwartz Post. I'm here tonight representing the St. Louis Home Builders Association, and I wanted to speak on Bill Number 5233, which is legislation to adopt new building codes in St. Charles County. And the code that the HBA is most interested in is the residential building code. And we have been working for the past year with Rick Meister and his staff, and have really appreciated the opportunity to present amendments to Mr. Meister and to have talked through them. We feel that the residential code that's in your ordinance tonight is a good code. We're in support of it. However, there is one final amendment we'd like to see added to the code. It pertains to concrete foundation walls, and I sent the information that you have before you, I sent via email last Friday. It's a lot of information, so I wasn't sure if you all would have a chance to go through it. But for as long as I believe St. Charles County has been adopting a residential code, you have included an alternative table that pertains to the, the type of structural support that you can put in your concrete foundation walls. The, the model code calls for both vertical and horizontal steel rebar, but the HBA would like to see this alternative table added, which would allow for horizontal rebar only, but only in situations where it's appropriate based on soil conditions and as long as there's no groundwater present. So this is something that we have offered for many years. It's in your current code now, and we're just asking that it be maintained in the code. And I can answer, I can try to answer any questions. I have others in the room with me tonight who could answer questions that are maybe more technical in nature. But again, we're just asking to maintain what's in your code currently with just one final amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Lester Hepperman.
I was going to go last because the people I'm here with are, have a lot more details than I do. I was basically planning on going last because I figured I'd just wait and see what they said. And this is on the Voss property. Sort of the misuse of it already, and he's asking to do more with it, and he's done quite a bit more with it than what you would think a small lawn care business would do. I'm just going to pass on this and wait for my nephews to get up here who have a lot more information for you.
Jared Jacobs on CUP 23-12.
My name is Jared Jacobs. I brought a drive with a lot of pictures on it. I'm not sure if it's going to work tonight. I'm asking the council to please table CUP 2312 at the current moment. I've spoken with DNR, and they are planning on coming back out to the property to do some more inspections on it. Bluegrass has had violations with DNR, Corps of Engineers, and the County of St. Charles. And I don't know how we scrolled through all of this.
We got the clicker over there. It should be able to work.
I'm not a very techie person, just to let you guys know all of this. So... So like I said, we've, I've spoke with DNR. They are planning on coming back out to this property to do some more inspections on it. And that's why we're asking you just to table this until we can get all the information from all these other entities. Essentially, Bluegrass started as a small lawn care business. It has grown into a large, very large entity. Sorry, I'm a little nervous right now. But this kind of goes over the Corps of Engineers, DNR being there. I've got pictures. The one on the left is showing you how far out of his current permit that he is. It's everything is supposed to be inside of a building. And for the county, they're wanting to just enlarge the building. We understand that, but also we look at, you know, our property value going down. We own property on both sides of this.
Oh, I was going to say.
And I'm way off in my notes here, but yeah, we're just concerned with all the vehicles. We love... We live on wells out in this area. There's vehicles. As you can see on some of these pictures, there's asphalt coming into the creeks. We've got salt runoff here on the left from a salt bin that goes straight to a creek. And like I said, I have small children in our family, and we're worried about what we're drinking nowadays. All the chemicals used to just sit out on the lot. He has cleaned some of that up, which we appreciate. But again, my main focus right now is just trying to hold off until we can find out what DNR and everybody else is going to have to say about the property. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to leave this up here for them, if that's okay.
Sure.
There were five speakers on this topic, so I have Bill, Linda, and Jason left, so I don't know if you want to allow.
We'll allow them.
All right. Bill Jacobs.
No, just one. Just one of them.
Thank you, commission members. Ultimately, we feel that this is a completely non-conforming zoning. Every property surrounding this application is agricultural. And there had to be variances in the first place in 2008 to get this approved. And of the three, you know, conditions, two of them were not met. First off, it says that the ingress and egress of the property be owned by the applicant. Well, it's not. There's a huge easement that they had to get to even be able to get to the property. And so, you know, I know that was allowed, but we've already had to give them further easement that's been encroached on with the road that they put in. And then, you know, there was supposed to be no outside storage. Well, ultimately, that's really all it is, is outdoor storage. And, you know, when we look at, you know, your comprehensive plan, it talks about rural residential ideals. It says if a development is a rural residential area, it should minimize the impacts on natural areas and in the nearby farming and agricultural operations. This is completely non-conforming. This isn't just your landscape company. On their website, it said they're a regional commercial company. They have four locations. Two of the other locations are commercially zoned properties. One has six acres, and it is completely packed with buildings and trucks and trailers and things for retaining walls and things for high-end hardscape solutions. It's not just, you know, a residential company with a couple mowers and a couple trailers. We don't want them, you know, I'm glad he has a successful business. That's fantastic. This is not the location for another site for them to continue to build up. If you look at their main property, just Google Earth 1385 Ferguson Lane in Bridgeton, Missouri, the complete six acres is completely filled with equipment and outdoor storage. And that's perfect for a commercial location, but not for this. All day long, all we hear is the beep-up alarms of backing up of high equipment. You know, we have, so it's just constant noise pollution. We can't go out on the property and enjoy it recreational anymore. As my brother said, he lives next door to it. And you just can't even be anywhere in his yard or outside and not just hear constant noise of this heavy equipment all day long. And it goes beyond the operating hours. It's supposed to be from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. It goes till 10:00 PM longer many nights. And so, there's nobody to check and balance this. That's why we're here, just ask you not to give him further approval when the original conditions weren't even met. And now you're giving him more room to just start, you know, adding more outdoor storage noise. It's just non-conforming. We just asked that you would not approve it.
Thank you, sir.
Bill Jacobs.
The council members, here are my concerns. In 2007, Mr. Voss's first permit, CUP 681, and the recommendation section two, no outside storage of equipment utilized in the business will be allowed. A letter was sent by Mr. Voss stating that the existing pole barn would be used only for the serving of mowers and storage. This did not happen for some time. He leased it to two other different people. And my question is, could he do this if the permit was for his lawn service only? Next, his first permit had it would be a lawn service. Do not say anything about snow removal. But there was a salt bin that was put up about seven feet from our property line with no cover, which has been removed. When it rained, the salt washed out, killing vegetation and causing erosion. Should Mr. Voss have checked with the county before putting up the salt bin with no cover since it was not on his permit? Next, all of the debris that was hauled in the months of 2002 that gave us concern about the aquifer that we use for drinking water in the creek that is near the property. Should Mr. Voss had checked to see if he needed a permit to have that amount hauled in, that they hauled for at least two or three months? Next, now it's been 16 years. Mr. Voss has not followed the first permit, CUP 681, where it says, "Being ordained by the County Council of St. Charles County, Section 2, Part 3, there will be no outside storage of equipment." So now, planning and zoning for Mr. Voss, not following the first permit, CUP 681, they recommend he request action be that Mr. Voss can expand his lawn care service with a new building. So now, he has gone from a lawn service to now a lawn care, snow management, mulching, and landscaping. And there was a letter stated that his equipment stated in the letter that Mr. Voss mentioned trucks, trailers, mowers, snowplows, and loaders. And then these trucks, which I think are considered 700-series dump trucks, and the trailers are about 20 or 30-foot cargo trailers. This equipment, you would not think of just being a lawn care service. We must think of this, we think of this, that his C... I'm sorry. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
And Linda Jacobs. This is concerning bill 5228.
Right.
Good evening, councilmen and councilwomen. So far, this whole process has got my hopes up that after 16 years of putting up with many unethical business practices, we might finally get some resolution to some of the issues. Is it acceptable to run out your CUP to two different businesses? The first business was a lawn care business, but it was not run by Matt Voss. The second business was an underground boring company, which also was not run by Matt Voss. The second business left about 2019. At this time, Bluegrass Lawn Service began moving lots of equipment to 699 Josephville Road. The condition that no outside storage of equipment utilized in the business will be allowed has been blatantly violated since 2008. There's also a citation from the County of St. Charles versus Matt Andrew Voss, "Failure to comply with the site plan for the lawn care business as approved by St. Charles County." And this was issued December 29, 2022. There's also an open investigation with the Department of Natural Resources. 2022, hundreds of dump truck loads were delivered to 699 Josephville Road. The noise of these trucks unloading and the skid loader moving the fill from sunup till late evening infringed upon our right to quiet enjoyment for several months. My basic constitutional rights are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. These rights were given to us by our founding documents. My pursuit of happiness is being infringed upon because Bluegrass Lawn Care repeatedly ignores the conditions of CUP 681. With this track record, I have a hard time thinking this business will change its behavior. Therefore, I'm asking that CUP 2312 be tabled till it is determined that the company is in compliance. Lastly, this is an agricultural area, and this business is not conforming to the area. There are more pictures, but I don't know how to bring them up.
That's fine. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sharon Kamnick.
Good evening. I went to another library board meeting. And, you know, I was sitting there watching all these people talk, and nobody really addresses anything of substance. They just run around the circles. We have large libraries in our country. We have big libraries, university libraries, and we have little neighborhood libraries. Have you been to Kisker? Have you ever been to the Kisker Library? It's not very big. Why would you take up any room in that library with smut? Why would you take up the precious room of a book to put in a smutty book? And the library board said, "Oh, no, there are no books there." But if you were there Tuesday night, she read the worst, dirtiest book you could ever get your hands on, and it was in the Kisker Library. That's just a little neighborhood library. It's not the Library of Congress. It's not bigger than this room. And it's for children. They have story hour. They have computers. They have movies. And I just can't understand why the library board would allow them to have this junk in the library. Isn't there anybody responsible for looking at what comes in the library? I can't even repeat to you what this book was about, what it was. It was just filth. You know, it's just a little neighborhood library in a district of homes. It's not the Library of Congress. I don't know why you can't do something to protect the fact that it's a family library. So I guess I've said it, and thank you. But I really have been watching, and we're going to stay watching. We're going to continue to hound you until you do something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Walter Trost.
Trost.
I guess I am the committee of one for the seniors in St. Charles, so I want to take this opportunity to thank you. For the people that weren't here that evening, the vote was 8-0 to freeze the tax, the property tax for the seniors. And I think that's a real good thing. I know a lot of people don't, but it really is. But I do have something that's been kind of irritating with me and people that I bond with, I live around. That night, the lawyer for the city of St. Charles talks about how much money it was going to cost. So everything I see now is about money, how much they're going to lose, whether you're listening to the radio, whether you're on television, and if you read, I'm still one of these people that gets the post dispatch. And here's what the post dispatch said. "In June, the county said freezing the property taxes would result in 9.7 million in lost property tax revenue in the first year it's implemented, and revenue loss would increase after that." I'm going to tell you a couple of things that I think that we've been talking about, and then you can probably tell me you can't answer the question. But last year, the personal property tax for autos, used autos, went up. I understand it was a very financial gain for certain things. Secondly, this freeze doesn't start till the year 2024. So all the increases, including mine, 19%, it's in my mind, is going to come into effect. So I'm going to pay that last year. I'm going to pay this 19% this year. And lastly, but not least, there's a tremendous amount of new buildings in St. Charles. Now, even if they're rental, the landlord has to pay that. Somebody has to pay it. So here we got three issues of money coming in, and I can read and look at and see that we're going to lose a lot of money. I'm going to call Tim tomorrow because I found out that you're my man. I'm going to call you tomorrow and find out, first of all, who's putting this out? And is it true? Because I find it's very hard to believe, and I thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Tom Raga.
Is Mr. Elman here or no?
No, he is.
I don't understand. I've never done anything like this before in my entire life. Essentially, I emailed this afternoon. Yours was rejected. Maybe it was too big. Long story short, the county's been doing an investigation on some weeds in the property behind me for 15 months. I'm highly offended and upset. You wasted a tremendous amount of our tax dollars. Out of the blue, Hubert, whatever his name is, decides he wants to waive it, which in my opinion devaluates my property. Everybody that's been to my house says it's in violation of county code. Your attorney, Mr. Roy O'Sullivan, who won't even look at me. Sorry. Does anybody have any questions? We'll talk about it another day. Again, I apologize, short notice, but I am extremely upset about this. It's very well documented. I'm an insurance adjuster. I've been in the insurance business for 40-plus years. Again, I apologize. You haven't seen it. Never in my life. I feel like I'm dealing with a plaintiff's attorney. He will not answer my questions. Give me a yes or no. Roy.
Sir, sir, address the council, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How do I reach out to Elman? I'm not dealing with him anymore.
I'm sure...
Our tax dollars are being... You know how much money's been spent on this in the last year and a half? You know how many people have been to my house that have told me it's in violation of county code? Does anybody have any questions? There's no reason I'm here. You probably don't.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry?
Who's your councilman?
I don't know him.
Tim.
Tim. Tim, kind of...
I was at your house.
Oh, you've been there?
Yeah. Nice house.
I didn't know that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you understand the whole thing about Tower Road and all the money I saved you guys, which I'd love to explain to you? I went to your contractor that widened out Tower Road. You dumped 350 loads of dirt and stuff, everything in my backyard. Did you get credit for that? Doesn't the county pay for county roads, Tower Road? Did you get that money back? I challenge you. Come back. I'm from Missouri. Show me. I saved you guys a tremendous amount of money. They dumped 350 dump loads in my backyard, and we turned it to grass. Did any of you look at those photos?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have any questions? Again, I apologize. I can't. I am fed up with him. This has been going on for 15 months. I am not a happy camper. I've never done anything like this before in my entire life. I'll be back in two weeks. My only focus here tonight was, do you have questions? Everybody tonight has asked, does anybody have a question? Not one person's come back with a question. Why?
Sir, during public comment, we do not respond. When the issues actually come before us, then we do.
Nobody said that. Thank you.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll be back in two weeks.
Arnie Deenoff.
Mr. Deenoff.
74 to Brazil?
Yeah, we'll get it. Mr. Deenoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Deenoff, county public advocate. And to the gentleman who testified before you just a minute ago, I'm also fed up with Mr. O'Sullivan. You know, he's a public servant. He's paid $175,000 plus a lifetime pension. And he never looks at the speakers when people have concerns and legality questions with St. Charles County. have concerns and legality questions with St. Charles County. It's, it's unbelievable that this is allowed to take place, and it happens to me all the time. He never looks or talks to residents to get things done. So getting into my, my issues. Number one, security at the rear entrance to the county council building needs revamping and investigated. Why is Sheriff Lewis allowing an inexperienced and not properly trained security officer from the courts building picking and choosing who gets screened, wanted, and who goes through security? This was stopped a year ago by Ms. Lykum, the Director of Administration, and it was agreed that everyone, to include county-appointed and elected officials, county department heads and managers, and all county employees are to go through the same security checkpoint as residents. There shall be no free passes by picking and choosing, making a potential unsafe environment and meeting facility, defeating the purpose of having a checkpoint and security. And it's about common sense here. Let's use some common sense. Since August 14th, when will the door to this chambers be fixed? We spent over $30,000 in that equipment, and yet we're not holding the contractor accountable. Thank you for unanimously defeating Bill 5222, another cell phone tower. Mary Alice Wright and the neighborhood have spoken very loudly. Now, please also defeat the illegal and unconstitutional land spot zoning in Bill 5224, a cell phone tower right in the middle of a residential zoning and housing district. Parking lot repairs and paving in the amount of $105,000? What about the county elections building that I've been crying about for years? And it's been neglected by the county. There's lots of pedestrians that are there casting votes during the various elections, but yet it's ignored county property. Energy conservation program, $27,932,000? And now there's a decrease of $437,000? What are we getting back on our return on investment on that kind of taxpayer money? I'm opposed to the $25 to $30 million bond issue, as I spoke before. We could build the state-of-the-art envy of the country with a new correctional facility in O'Fallon for 75 million. Is Kevin Colleen a political patronage appointee from Webster Groves working for the county for free, or is there a salary? Mr. O'Sullivan said there's no public salary. This is another official public information request under Chapter 610 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri to Mr. Elman and the county councillor, Mrs. Hinton.
Thank you, Mr. Deenoff.
And, and the other thing is, why?
Final speaker.
Thank you.
Why do we listen to the HBAC, the Home Builders Association? They're a lobbyist company. You are the elected officials.
Thank you.
You need to protect us in terms of safety.
Sir, thank you. Thank you. Yes, anyone else? No? Okay. All right, that ends public comment. I don't believe there's an oral report from the county executive. I would like to report, I did talk to him today, and he is recovering well from knee replacement, and that's always an iffy thing. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. With a motion and second to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda has passed. Next up is Resolution Number 20-07.
Resolution 23-07, sponsored by Terry Hollander, a resolution stating the intent of St. Charles County, Missouri to issue bonds for certain capital expenditures.
Okay. Questions or comments on this particular resolution? Seeing none, please call the roll.
A resolution stating the intent of St. Charles County, Missouri to issue bonds for certain capital expenditures. Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 23-7 passes. Next up is bills for final passage, beginning with Bill Number 5224.
Bill Number 5224, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from R1E, Single Family Residential District, to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District per application, RZ 2312.
Questions or comments on this particular bill?
Just real quick, sir. I just want to thank the residents for advocating, and when you guys come prepared, it makes a big difference, and you guys did an exceptional job.
Thank you, sir.
I agree. All right, please call the roll.
Bill Number 5224, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from R1E, Single Family Residential District, to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District per application, RZ 2312. Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
No.
Councilmember Schneider?
No.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Swanson?
No.
Councilmember Brazel?
No.
Councilmember Ehlum?
No.
And I would like to amend mine. As they say in school, not paying attention.
But that is your name.
All right, Bill 5224 is defeated. Next up is, next up is Bill Number 5225.
Bill Number 5225, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A, Agricultural District, and C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, to C2 General Commercial District per application, RZ 2311.
Questions or comments on this particular bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A, Agricultural District, and C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, to C2 General Commercial District per application, RZ 2311. Councilmember Hammond?
No.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson?
No.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Okay, Bill Number 5225 passes. Next up is Bill Number 5226.
Bill Number 5226, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from C2 General Commercial District to R3B, Multi-Family Residential District, per application, RZ 2313.
Questions or comments on 5226? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from C2 General Commercial District to R3B, Multi-Family Residential District, per application, RZ 2313. Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Okay. Bill Number 5226 passes. Next bill for final passage, Bill Number 5227.
Bill Number 5227, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A, Agricultural District, to C2 General Commercial District, per application, RZ 2314.
Questions or comments on 5227?
I have a couple of questions. The applicant is here?
Yeah.
So you're, you're doing an auto repair shop, is that what it is?
Car sales.
Oh, sales.
Yes.
And you're right in that area where all those other houses are being kind of tore down and hadn't been built.
Yes, yes. Yeah, and I live in Lake St. Louis, so I want to just be closer to home.
Yeah, okay. No, that's fine. I was just curious. Yeah, okay, good.
I have a question for him.
Sure.
It's my understanding from watching the P&amp;Z meeting that you have a similar business going on in, in some other location?
That's correct.
And haven't had problems with that?
No.
And it's also my recollection that planning and zoning voted to pass this or to approve of it.
That's correct, yes.
Am I right on that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Bill Number 5227, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A, Agricultural District, to C2 General Commercial District, per application, RZ 2314. Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Okay. Bill Number 5227 passes. Bill Number 5228.
Bill Number 5228, an ordinance amending ordinance number 07-084, granting conditional use permit number 681 for a lawn care service to Matt Voss and Denise Voss, property owners, and Matthew A. Voss, Jr., for Bluegrass Lawn Care.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes, thank you. There's a lot going on with this one. I have visited the site, walked the entire property with the property owner, Mr. Voss. There's some real concerns here, the neighbors. I've had extensive conversations with, I think, the majority of the family now and all the other neighbors. I do think this needs to be tabled, but before I make that motion, having DNR come out and do a reinspection, I think is very important. I did reach out to Mr. Meyer today to talk about some of the other problems we have. Within our ordinance, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Myers, is when we do the lawn care businesses, it's more for small, small operations. This has now turned into a major commercial operation. If you saw from the pictures earlier of the trucks coming in and out with the trailers behind, that's not some guy who's running a small business, you know, hooked up to the back of his truck and just getting by. This is a commercial operation in a residential area. As Linda Jacobs mentioned about being a good neighbor, I think that's always important when you are operating a commercial business within a residential area, and this is surrounded by residents on all sides. So with that being said, Mr. Meyer, do you want to add anything on to this application with the pending violation that's going on currently?
The violations that I'm aware of date to last year when we received a report. We contacted the property owner, sent him a notice of violation, and it was not corrected, the violations. And so a ticket was issued, and this is now in municipal court. And the applicant has been in municipal court a couple of times. Now, if you know the municipal court, the judge always likes for, I don't know the proper legal term, but I'll say to exhaust the remedies for the, for the person before them. They like them to try to correct things, bring the property into, out of violation. So one concern I have is if, if there's a condition placed on this that, for the, for the conditional use permit, what I'm trying to say is that the conditional use permit is a way to bring this property into compliance. So the vehicles and equipment that have been outside, they need to be stored indoors in order for this to be compliant. So he's before the judge now. The judge, I'm sure, is telling him, hey, you need to try to correct this, and it's a way to correct this is one of two ways. Either to pare down his operation and store everything in that one existing building there, or build a new building, get a new site plan through, through St. Charles County, get that approved to clean up the rest of the property. So far, a, a number of the violations have been abated. For instance, that salt pile is gone. There's some outdoor storage that's gone, but there's some things that are left over that need to be corrected. And so the conditional use permit would allow a site plan to be issued, which will allow a larger building to be built and to store all this stuff indoors, so.
And earlier, I passed out a list that Mrs. Jacobs gave me. I made copies for you all to see. Some of the concerns they have, they would like to see remedied, and I think that's something, before I make the motion table, because that'll end pretty much our conversation, I want the rest of the board to have a chance.
I, I'm just wondering why we would want to vote to, you know, to table it. I'm ready to vote no on it. If they can't even comply with their current cup, why would we even give them an opportunity to, to fix it and then move on to something else? I, I'm opposed to the whole thing, and I prefer not to, to table it, but I mean, if the motion passes, then so be it.
Anyone else's thoughts? Yes, Mr.?
Yeah, I'm opposed to it, too. I, you know, I guess this is one of those places out of sight, out of mind. I've been up and down Joseph Phil Road. I've never seen this place before, but it's definitely gotten way out of control and is nothing that was originally approved, what they're doing there now. So I'm totally opposed to this, to granting any kind of approval.
Any other comments?
Nope. I'm not going to make a motion to table, then.
Okay, we are now in the process of going ahead and voting. Okay, please call the roll.
Bill Number 5228, an ordinance amending ordinance number 07-084, granting conditional use permit number 681 for lawn care service to Matt Voss and Denise Voss, property owners, and Matthew A. Voss, Jr., for Bluegrass Lawn Care. Councilmember Swanson?
No.
Councilmember Brazel?
No.
Councilmember Ehlum?
No.
Councilmember Hollander?
No.
Councilmember Hammond?
No.
Councilmember Schneider?
No.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Okay, Bill Number 5228 fails. We now move on to Bill Number 5229.
Bill Number 5229, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement relating to St. Charles County's Urban County Community Development Block Grant Program, or Urban County CDBG Program, namely, a 2023 subrecipient agreement between St. Charles County and the City of St. Peters to operate and run the city's CDBG programs and services.
Questions or comments on 5229? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement relating to St. Charles County's Urban County Community Development Block Grant Program, or Urban County CDBG Program, namely, a 2023 subrecipient agreement between St. Charles County and the City of St. Peters to operate and run the city's CDBG programs and services. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Okay, Bill 5229 passes, and the final bill for final passage is Bill Number 5230.
Bill Number 5230, an ordinance fixing and establishing the rate and levying of taxes for the general revenue fund and for various special funds of and for the county of St. Charles, Missouri for the year 2023.
Questions or comments on this particular bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance fixing and establishing the rate and levying of taxes for the general revenue fund and for various special funds of and for the county of St. Charles, Missouri for the year 2023. Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Bill Number 5230 passes. We now have bills for introduction, beginning with Bill Number 5231.
Bill Number 5231, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance authorizing execution of an amendment to an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for use of county right-of-way for storm sewer, utility, and roadwork and related documents.
Questions or comments on this particular bill? Seeing none, we move on to Bill Number 5232.
Bill Number 5232, requested by Matt Swanson and Terry Hollander, sponsored by Matt Swanson and Terry Hollander, an ordinance amending sections 240.201, 240.510, 240.1750, 240.1760, and 500.500 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, offenses concerning public safety, solid waste management, and adoption of property maintenance code of St. Charles County.
Questions or comments? Mr. Swanson?
Yeah, and this is for staff. I don't know really who to direct it towards.[1632.47] I don't know really who to direct it towards. On the preliminary draft of this, we show the penalties for this increasing. The new version that's in front of us does not do that on certain ones. I didn't know if there was a reason for that.
If you're referring to the table that's within the document, Councilmember Swanson, the reason was to make it align with the maximum penalties for other ordinance violations within the code of ordinances?
Okay, so, because some of them are increases. I'm looking at code 240.510, goes from 100 to 300, but when I go to deposit waste and waters of county, code 240.510, it's 1,000, and reoccurring is also 1,000. Why are we able to increase, or is the 1,000 the max?
Right. That's the, in order to make it harmonious, I guess, with the other penalty provisions within the code, $1,000 would be the max.
Is there any way we can change that? Or is that due in another ordinance or bill?
You could try to amend it right now.
I'd like to go back to the original way that it was presented.
Well, it's for introduction, excuse me, councilmembers. So if you've got issues with it, we can amend it in time to change it before it would be finally passed. So if you want to send us whatever changes you think are necessary, then we can look at it and have time to make those changes.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I tried to call you today, but my schedule was jam-packed with this one. I would just like to go back to the original draft version we had before these are struck out and move forward if the rest of the council is open to that.
Mr. Brazel?
I agree with Matt, he's working on this. We've got, in these rural areas, you get these people coming out, they're dumping couches and off Darshbottom Road, they're constantly dumping. The county has to send people down to pick up the trash. It's ridiculous. And so if they're not stiff, they should be, I want them to be as stiff as possible, as high as it could be, because I'm the one going down there and picking up the trash and putting it in my dumpster unless it gets, it's too much. But, so, yeah, I'm with Matt. We got to increase and maximize the numbers, or otherwise they don't care.
Might I suggest that we come back next meeting with a substitute bill increasing the penalties, and that would be sufficient, I believe?
I think it's, did Mr. O'Sullivan get that?
Mr. O'Sullivan, is that correct? If we would come back with a substitute bill increasing the penalties at the next meeting, that would be?
We can certainly talk about that, but again, the reason that those numbers were adjusted downwards was because $1,000 would be the maximum allowable penalty. So I'm happy to have a conversation with you all offline to explain that.
I want to understand. So you're saying, so it was two, but then you're saying by state law, it has to be 1,000, it can't be 2,000? Is that what you mean?
The county charter sets the...
Oh, the charter? Oh, I see, okay.
Oh, so if we go down to charter issue, that becomes a bigger deal.
It does.
It would be by both statute and the county charter. But like I said, if we're, the draft was sent to you all some time ago, so if there's additional changes, I'm happy to visit with you all again.
Let's continue working on it, then, at this point, and there may be a substitute bill next time, but if it's by charter, there's really nothing we can do with that.
Okay. Thank you. Next up is bill number 5233.
Bill number 5233, requested by Michael Herbert, sponsored by Dave Hammond, an ordinance amending chapter 500, building codes and county building commission ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSU CMO, by adopting St. Charles County amendments and modifications of relevant standardized codes.
Yes, Mr. Hammond?
Yes, the building commission met on this, and the building commission's made up of different trades, electrical, plumbing, mechanical. We have an architect and engineer on that commission, and we reviewed the proposed changes, both what the county has and also what the HBA has asked us to look at, possibly making some changes. And we did go along with a couple of minor changes that the HBA wanted to do, and then the issue with the foundations came up, and the building commission did not want to amend the code. But I also asked that we have the building official come up and talk a little bit about what those, what that change, what they're proposing to change.
I'm going to introduce. We're going to use the overhead here for a second. So, thank you, councilmembers. If you've not had the chance to meet Rick Meister, I wanted to introduce him formally to you all. He started August 22 of last year, and then I think it was nine days later, I suddenly went out for three months unexpectedly. So the poor guy had to kind of figure out things on his own there, short term, but he's done a tremendous job. I really appreciate him stepping up. He's got a great knack for understanding, obviously, the code requirements, but also working on solutions to try to solve problems when they come up. So I wanted to show this chart. This is kind of just some of the work we've done, that he's done. He actually put this together. This is kind of a flow that shows the three-tiered kind of process that we went under, underwent. It involves staff review first. He worked all, looked at through all the code requirements with the new codes, got stakeholder input from the cities, from the county residents, from the HBA, from other building officials, and then made recommendations. As Councilman Hammond mentioned, it went to the building commission. They recommended the draft that's before you tonight, and then it's up to you all to finalize that. So with that said, I wanted to turn it over to Rick so he could answer any technical questions, as well as talk about the one issue that the HBA has.
Thank you, Rick.
Good evening.
Could we get your name again?
Meister, Rick Meister.
Meister, okay.
Yes. So as Dave mentioned, we, and Mike also on that side, we've kind of gone through an extensive review, which gets us here. The county usually adopts a code about every six years, based on how the model codes come out, specifically to the question on the HBA, the one that Emily brought to you earlier, which is a foundation issue. We've worked really hard with the HBA. They had roughly 90 proposals, so I actually feel great that we got it all the way down to one. So I'm going to chalk that up as a victory. They've been great for us to work with throughout the process. So on the specific issue that we've kind of landed on, I have a handout that I can drop here, and if you guys would like a copy, let me know. What it's kind of gotten into, Emily stated it before, we've adopted an amendment to the building code for the last probably three cycles and maybe there before. What it allows, what the amendment allows is to get rid of vertical reinforcement. I'm going to try to move this so you can, so the glare is not so bad. So as you will see down here, this is the current, this is the current way we do it in the county, and also the HBA's proposal. This is the most common thing that we see on an eight-foot wall. You have two pieces of rebar at the top and the bottom. The current code is over on, I'm sorry, the 2021 code is the one that we have over here. By not taking the amendment and the bill proposed in front of you, it would go back to this scenario where you have more vertical reinforcement than we're currently allowing in the code. We, to kind of come up now to the chart, what we've seen here recently, which is kind of our indicator for not recommending the code change, is our number of total foundation permits. So the county has seen a large number of foundation permits go up exponentially over these last five years. That is the main concern for why we are, have recommended ultimately to the commission, who the commission agreed, to you all, to not take the proposal. Roughly, we are on pace for about 120 foundation permits this year, which is identical to 2022. So it doesn't look like that little dip you see is going to trend down. It looks like it's going to stay put.
So, Rick, you're talking about running in vertical, what, four foot center?
Yeah, you know, Emily, kind of, it's a really hard technical issue to explain. Not all walls always require vertical reinforcement. The code always requires horizontal reinforcement in a foundation wall, like you see in the bottom picture. So this horizontal rebar and over here is always required, but the vertical differs, and it's based on how much, how tall the wall is, the thickness of the wall, and how much soil or unbalanced backfill is against that wall.
Is that on the vertical? That's the vertical? Always the double number fours, always the double number fours, top and bottom, right? But you're saying that the chart will offer you the verticals on every four foot or whatever?
In certain parameters, the code will require that you also put verticals. So on a typical house, let's say on the front of your house, that's, the basement wall is completely below grade, that's going to have the maximum, that's going to require rebar generally. To answer your question, Mr. Brazel, that would be between probably three feet and four feet, but on a walkout, it may not require vertical. It's just very dependent on how much backfill that you have. It's very situational base, so it's not always, it's just a...
My only question is, statistically, when you're coming up with this code, do you have numbers that show that the failure rate, if you don't have vertical versus nonvertical? Like, can you show us? Can you tell us? Okay, these are added costs to new homebuyers, because it's going to be costing, going to pass to the homebuyers. So can you show us? Here's what we have by the Concrete Institute. It says that your foundation has a 10% more of vertical or horizontal cracks if you don't do this rebar system. That's what I would want to know. Unless, because, you know, if it's just, you guys are just doing it because other people are doing it, that's not a good reason for me.
This may be a close enough answer. The chart that is in the current code, that is in the model code, it requires the vertical rebar in these circumstances. That chart is based on the American Concrete Institute, so it is not just a couple, like, code officials or people. These are the premier institutions that go through this research to develop those charts.
Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, Joe, if you look at his chart there, he's showing, those are required, those are foundation repairs in the last several years that have gone up dramatically. The horizontal, the only thing they do is for shear, for loads coming down on the foundation. The vertical rods will help strengthen the foundation from being pushed in from lateral pressures, like water pressure and soil pressure, when we have, you know, major rains and so forth. So that's really what the vertical rod requirement is, why it's in the code.
No, I understand that, Dave. It's just that the, according to the letter, it said that the foundation repair people did a big push, only didn't get the foundations repaired, so that's why the numbers increased so much. And so, and I'm just asking, you know, I want to know, it was like when we were going to drywall the basements, remember that? They wanted to drywall, finish all the basement ceilings with drywall for fire ready, but there was no statistics to back it, and it would have been an extra cost that wasn't necessary. The fire departments were trying to call, but give us your statistics. Why? I mean, how many people walked into a burning house and fell through the floor? Were there the numbers? There weren't none. And so on this particular issue, what I'm asking you is, if you're adding costs and you're saying that it's better, I know it's better, but I'm just saying, I don't know if it's government's position, it's not unsafe, it's not none of that stuff. I just want to, it's just take, putting more burden on people, more expenses on people. I want to know what the absolute facts are. That's all. I'm not saying I'm a poser for it, I just want to know what the facts are. Not just because you, not you, but someone thinks it's better, show me the numbers, show me the statistics. That's all I'm asking.
Terry? Yes, Mr. Baker?
Yeah, so, I guess this is the department for Mr. Herbert, but do we get a geotech report? I mean, it seems like whether there's vertical or horizontal reinforcing steel would be all dependent on whether a geotech engineer believes that there should be. I mean, I don't think we should arbitrary just say, yeah, let's do it because we should do it, but I think it should be based off a professional's report and what's their professional opinion.
Yeah. Well, we don't always get geotechnical reports for every lot in a subdivision there. I mean, they do a general testing.
But I'm saying, if the home builder would like to not have to put in it, then get a geotech report saying they're not needed.
Yeah, but then you're adding costs again. It's the same thing. You just add an extra cost. It'd probably be cheaper putting rebar in than having an engineer do a study on it.
Those engineers can be pretty expensive.
Well, I mean, yeah, but I just care a lot less expensive than if you're building 100 foundations.
Yes. I'm just kidding. Yes, Mr. Swanson?
You know, I always enjoy looking at graphs and all, and looking at that, what was the age of the homes?
On average, we looked, we tried to take a look at the homes on our report. Our software currently goes back seven years. What we found was that the, kind of answers your question the best way I can, what we found is that we looked at when a house was built and when a foundation permit walked into the door for that house, and we found that on average, that was 38 years.
So 38 years. Okay, so this is where I was going with this, because I know with settling that we have, the type of soil structures we have, you're going to end up with cracks into it. And of course, I think we can all agree, the more rebar you put in something, the stronger it's going to be, but we also all know, good thing about concrete, no one's going to steal it and it will really catch on fire.
And it cracks.
And it cracks. And it's going to crack, and that's where I was going with this. If these are older homes that are needing repairs, not to mention, we had the housing market boom that occurred, where inspectors weren't even able to get out to see these, and I know that for a fact, in Wentzville, when that happened. It was the explosion. We weren't doing it correctly. How many streets did we lay straight on to dirt with no base to it, and we've changed those standards? So are these some of the changes in what we need to fix because of our lack of standards in the past versus the construction today? So a chart like this, yeah, I can see it. You know what? My parents' foundation probably needs some work, too. It's a 50-year-old home. It's going to need it. So I don't know if this is something that needs to be put onto future homeowners, because as you're right, the cost is just going to be passed along, and I don't really know if this is a big benefit for it. If we've been doing this, my house is 20 years old, do we have some cracks? Sure. But it's going to happen because of settling, and I don't know if the rebar is going to make any difference to that.
Any other questions?
Well, just keep in mind that building code's a minimum, you know? Any foundation I build, I put vertical rebar.
I actually do, too. That's what I said, I should do it anyway.
And it's not, it's not that much more expensive, what the code is requiring. I don't know if you have a cost analysis, but I wouldn't think it was, it's less than 500 bucks.
We don't have a cost analysis. I think HBA did have some numbers based on that, but I think the only thing I would just echo is, this is a standard that was already in the 2015 codes, so the two cycles ago. We kept the amendment in there in 15, in 2017 when we approved it. So the standard has already been there. We are keeping the standard lower than it's currently in place. So if that's what HBA, the HBA is asking, to keep the standard, to keep the amendment in place, meaning keep the standard lower. So the only thing we would say is, regardless of the age, if we're seeing an increase in foundational repair permits, is the idea of keeping this, lowering the standard a good idea at the same time we're seeing an increase, even if it's the age or not? That's kind of what we're faced with.
Do we have somebody from the HBA that can give us a cost analysis on what its additional change would be?
Yes. Yes. We'll get you, we'll get you next.
This is also on the amendment that I passed out to you earlier, but my members, you know, are telling me that the cost would be about $2,000 to add the vertical steel to like a smaller, maybe two-story home, and it could go up to, or I think it's 2,500, it could go up to 8,000, 8,500, if you have like a large sprawling ranch that has, you know, quite a large foundation, so.
The price of rebar has gone up over the years.
Well, you know, everything's going up, so.
Mr. Grifzy?
I was going to ask Michael, Rick, are, so we're looking at what's proposed is without the HBA amendment, which would include the vertical steel.
That is correct.
Of other jurisdictions in the county that adopted the 2021 code, are we alone in this approach, or are there other jurisdictions? What are they doing?
Yeah, so right now, the only jurisdiction out in the county who has adopted the same base is City of St. Charles. They've gone to the 2021. They have not taken this amendment, but they are also the jurisdiction that did not take it in the previous. So they're the only ones who've currently adopted that. They have not done it. We have had conversations with the other jurisdictions in the area, and they also plan, they're seeing the same thing in their metrics, so they have the same concerns based on the numbers of foundation permits that they're seeing. So on a staff review, they are all kind of following suit with the bill that's in front of you without the HBA approval. So we are trying to kind of act in coordination with the other jurisdictions that we work with. We have intergovernment contracts that require them to adopt the same codes we do, so they have a tendency to kind of be right, right behind us waiting for that, so they don't have a double adoption. But as of my conversations with other jurisdictions, everybody is currently planning on not, their recommendation will not include the HBA's proposal.
And then on the City of St. Charles, you know how long, when did they stop accepting or adopting the amendment, the HBA amendment? Has that been in place, five, 10?
Yeah, so they stopped when they went to a 15 cycle, so it would be after the 15. I'm not exactly sure when they adopted that, if it was 15, 16, or 17. We adopted ours in 17, so I'm going to assume it's roughly around there, so you're probably looking at a six-year cycle beforehand, and now they're one year in. They adopted last, sorry, they adopted this January, so they're nine months into their 21 base.
And I got one more question. So, Mike, you look at building permits on a regular basis. So City of St. Charles has not adopted the HBA amendment for at least the five or six years. Can you see any notable difference in the number of single-family building permits they have because of the additional cost of steel in homes in St. Charles versus, say, the number of permits in St. Peters or Old Fallon?
So for the last four years, I can go back, St. Charles has been one, two, or three in permits in the county. So I would say, no, I have not seen a negative effect on that.
Is there any other questions or comments for either one of these gentlemen? Okay, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on. That concludes our bills for introduction. Are there any announcements or miscellaneous?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.